Thank you, welcome back everybody. So we will continue now with the twenty twenty four draft operating budget. Yes, yes. Thank you Chair, I will turn this over to Ms. Portwell.
Thank you. So in front of you on the first page of the twenty twenty four proposed operating budget. We did a comparison to twenty twenty three and I do just want to point out that some movements throughout the year and often my calculations. So as we move through the document, you will you might see and know the difference in the the numbers, it's about twenty nine thousand dollars. We confirmed that the budget absolutely still does balance. The, for example, wages and salaries, we've confirmed that that was the published number for the approved twenty twenty three operation budget. So I just wanted to bring that up ahead of time that if you're going through this either tonight or a later date or prior to the meeting that we have confirmed it's balanced, I just did not find where I made my yeah. My budget transfer error before going to publish on this. But it does balance. So as presented and from the twenty twenty four, October twenty fourth and twenty fifth budget workshop meetings, we took committee through a number of operational business cases. The ones that are noted at the top of this page up to the side in the box were the ones that we were given. Consensus that those should be included in the budget. There is also a desktop, I believe, that will be spoken to at the end of going through all of these by our mayor. And with that, I think just looking to committee, did you want to go through all of them one by one? Are you just taking questions for any changes? I turn it back to you.
Uh, committee, I believe we can just do it to questions. That probably the best way to go with. So this David Campbell has a bubble in the screen there for us to see. Counselor Taylor, see your hand up. So we'll start with you.
Well, can I ask us some general questions on the budget first?
Uh, true. All right, yeah.
I don't know how to say this. I can find the budget package incomplete without actual expenditures in it. I find there's no actual expenditures in here for two thousand twenty three. Be worked into the budget somehow. So for example, in January to October two thousand twenty two comparison of actuals versus budgeted, all were comparing seeing comparing this budget and coming budgeted from the next year. Or or maybe the actual model to the end of the year, I used to see a budget that is actual, so not seeing that. So I take that kind of information would help us better understand our over and under budget estimations. And then therefore be able to learn from last year's budget. Otherwise, we could have done this budget, uh, two thousand twenty four budget a year ago. Have any look at actions. Can you comment on why that information is out there?
Certainly, and and I'm sure I'm sure that CEO will also add in. So the presentation of it, I mirrored what was presented from the prior year. And I I felt that that worked well. And really having actual included is is a matter of preference and and in my past history, I have included them and I've been told that it shouldn't be there because we're comparing budget to budget, not actuals and mixing those up. I'm certainly agreeable to bringing forward the report with the actuals and in comparison to. I do believe at this point in time and discuss it in discussing what committee wishes to have in the twenty twenty four operating budget. We're able to do at this stage without the comparison to actuals, but certainly agreeable to bringing them back to you.
Well, I would seek consensus to get some sort of information on the actuals because I don't know how you understand what the upper underestimate are and how you learn from last year's information. You don't have that information. You don't have to have it today, but if we could have it before we make our budget decisions, I think that would just be a a wise and standard part of any budget package. So I would seek your support in order that we get this vital information to help us make the better budget decisions before this is finalized.
Okay, committee, we have a consensus.
Counselor, yeah, I'm I'm very happy to support that. For I just think about within my own sphere of experience and management at work. That's actually a process that I follow very closely is monitoring what our actuals are comparatively when setting the budget for the next year. And then sort of exactly what the long running trends of those actions are. Again, it just for myself, it helps me understand budget a little bit. So I'm happy to support that. Thank you.
So I have myself. And I hear what you're saying, but I get what you're saying. The only thing though that I'm wondering about, and this is a question to you directly. Because as an administrator, in the role you do, I get that because you have to, you have to account for the dollars that are spent. But as you were born, they don't go into that very detail. And that's my concern is that we get all that detail and then we're gonna go way deeper than what we need to go into. Where's administration is brought back to us and says this department requires this. And we get detailed quarterly reports every quarter as and with that information that has the expenses and everything to it. So my concern is at this point in the game to go have all the expenses and start questioning how much are we on this? How much are we that? Why are we spending this? It's our job to say this is what we need to run the organization, their job to use that money accordingly. And again, if there's a surplus, there's a surplus. But I guess my concern is, is, you know, because I get where you're coming from, but the roles are different to me. And that's where I I coming from this is that that difference in roles. So that's my comments on the on the consensus. I would support getting the information is fine. I just, I mean, it's fine if we want to get into it, but my concern is is how deep are we gonna go? And that's that's where I'm at. So.
What? Right for you.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, see, the only problem is in that instance, the board exists at the board level. This one, in a way, looking for, again, you would address my own personal context, is that that school situation is a bit unique because outside of just a general allotment. Sort of play two rules. I have to understand what that long running budgeting process looks like for our school. Is it's just it's, I understand what you're saying and I agree, you know. Our job as a council is to simply allocate an amount to administration, you know, allocates the specifics thereof. But sort of looking at that individual context doesn't necessarily apply within sort of that that school alone view for myself as an administrator or pardon me, for myself as a counselor. With all of the areas that were being asked to sort of support moving forward, simply understanding what are we spending also for the the sake of being able to go back to the debate here and say, yeah, I actually do have an understanding of what our actuals are year to year. Uh, not not to look at administration, say you can't spend that. But we may have to say at a high level, okay, well, you know what? This department's request, you know, we think that we have to retool it by this amount based on what we've done in the past like it. Because we wouldn't want to underfund something, you know what I mean? Like that's that's part of my my line of thought too.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor and then Counselor Reese and Counselor Chambers.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking a lot of detail. I was just kind of thinking, you know, at the level of detail that this page is at. If we just had another column that said, you know, actual happy actual from January to October compared. The two ways you could do it, whichever way you feel is best, I don't really care. You could either do it like uh, January to October actual or maybe November actual. So we can see where we stand. Or you could do November to the end of the year with the actual actually projected to the end of the year, you know, sort of spitball to the end of the year. So we have some idea of actual. But if we don't have any idea of actual, I don't really know how we do this legitimately. Nice.
I I appreciate that clarification. I guess I didn't realize that at that level, that you're looking for. I appreciate Counselor Reese and then Counselor Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will support this motion. I think anytime we have a counselor who is requesting information that's gonna assist them in making the best decision ever. We have to support them. And another thing is our Director of Corporate Services. This is something you're familiar with, you've done it before in past budgets. It's not a hardship. And so that's why I will support this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Reese and Counselor James.
I struggle with this ask, um, through the chair. I struggle with this ask because seen this from a administrative lens and a council lens, I I agree to a lot of your points. Um, counsel has even with the clarification from Counselor Taylor, I I I think when you're looking at these numbers that are very close, it's administration's job to make sure that they've obviously done that hard work. They've made sure that these numbers work and that I don't feel that that's our position to be jumping in. If we're getting our quarterly reports, they're not gonna be throwing numbers out here in a a tough budget year in any year that that's going to be inflated or or under or nor should they be. Um, and and I think that I'm used to a budget to budget comparison. I think if there's any giant, um, you know, ripples and waves, which I really don't think there's, there's there are things that are brought forward separately. And I I don't think I'll support the motion for additional information. It it is it is extra work for administration. And I mean, if it serves a good purpose, then I guess that's fine, but I I don't see an issue with how it's presented at the level of council at this moment.
Okay, thank you, Council Chambers. Maybe any further discussion on this consensus? Do prefer we're gonna be electronic? Okay, so we will then be voting electronically. Oh, CEO, yeah, please, sorry.
If I could, I just wanted to point out that we do always quarterly report to council. So that will be coming if, you know, if we want to bring that into conjunction.
I I it was on my list to do in October. I just did not get it to the surface. My apologies.
So that quarterly tracking report, we do go council, we can bring that forward. I believe that would include I think a good level of that high level detail of where we're tracking how we're doing with this item. And as we go through the operational budget, we can speak to a little bit of so-called the mechanisms of the work of the budget to produce the product that you see here today, which I think will give councils as well.
Uh, thank you, CEO. Counselor Sasha.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just have a question before this is called question. I think Counselor Taylor's intent is that the twenty twenty three actuals are presented as part of future budget discussions. Correct? Uh, if if that's the intent, because otherwise this could just be presented as annual report, there's no timeline and no definition of thinking where it comes back to council. Thank you. That was the intent and administration is understanding that that was the intent to Counselor Taylor and administration, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sasha. So thank you for putting that out. Yeah, currently as the consensus reads, yeah, it could be anytime. So your intent is to seek consensus to have twenty twenty three actuals presented to council during the twenty twenty four budget deliberations.
Correct. Okay, and that's more about that the town manager says is fine with me.
Okay.
It's a standard three, four year report, that's good.
So if I may then clarify clarification, sorry, Counselor Sasha.
Well, you just to follow up then, yes. So previously you'd indicated a column on that spreadsheet. Which it would be my preference. I I the quarterly reports we need to get too, yeah, but then it's hard to juxtapose those with that sometimes. So I I would prefer that that additional column with the twenty twenty three actuals on that spreadsheet.
Right.
It's my preference.
I I agree. I I misspoke.
So what I'm hearing, if I may, it was coming to us anyway potentially without this, but now it's clarified, we can't find, we definitely want those actuals and and the intent is that be part of the the discussion, not just in the quarterly report, that's clear to administration. Okay, if this if this if achieved, if we achieve consensus, so. Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Sasha. Uh, count the committee, any other questions or comments on this consensus? Oh, sorry, no, no. Okay, we'll be voting electronically. So then we will call the question and move to seek consensus to have the twenty twenty three actuals presented to council during the twenty twenty four budget deliberations. Please vote now. And that is carried five to two with Mr. Mayor and Counselor Chambers against. All right. Moving on then, uh, Counselor Taylor.
I have another general question on the form if that's so.
Yeah, we we finished this item. Go ahead.
Yeah, under revenues, under revenues. Can you tell me how much has been estimated in the revenue for wildfire deployment revenue? Please.
Asking clinical side project. Give me a moment, please. We do have directors on hand able to speak to all of their individuals budget pages, a summary for each department. We currently I'm gonna come with this or director divulge up. I'm not seeing where we have anything for wildfire deployment in the budget.
Twenty twenty four budget, there is nothing.
Which would have been done on purpose to ensure that we were budgeting conservatively rather than inflating revenues that may or may not come to fruition.
You have a follow up, Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, well, then I'd like to seek consensus of my wildfire employment revenue consensus, please. Knowing that information, go ahead. And Jen, if you could put that up while I speak. Uh, where's uh, see consensus that the town direct administration to budget two hundred thousand for wildfire deployment revenue in two thousand twenty four. I'll tell you why I picked that number. For a number of years, our our wildfire rescue services generated unbudgeted net and net revenue to the town dependent for wildfire deployment. Including our sprinkler system and our other equipment in two thousand twenty one, that number was ninety five thousand. I don't know what it was two thousand twenty two. And two thousand twenty three, the fire department, the fire chief tells me it was five hundred thousand dollars. So this three year average of about two hundred thousand dollars per year, even excluding the two thousand twenty two estimates. And this is not even considering the fact that we just tentatively improved the capital budget. Where the deployment has where our deployment potential for revenue has been dramatically increased through the purchase of that greatly enhanced sprinkler system. And that 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 buggy system has part of the rationale for approving that, that the fire chief gave us, because that's just gonna dramatically improve the fire revenue that 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 we have. And so I think a number of two hundred thousand dollars per year or a similar number than I do would be a relatively conservative estimate. And I think it's a reasonable thing that we generally started a new revenue service. And then I I I think what should happen with this is this money comes into general revenue because that's where all this was paid for. And then as anything else where it gets positioned, you know, this reserve, it's a council decision later on in the year. I I think this is a first class revenue service that we're leaving another budget. Certain revenue number and it's starting to become predictable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Taylor. So maybe we do have then consensus. Any comments or questions, Counselor Sasha?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would have a question for administration. I'm all for conservative budgeting, but I'm also in favor of realistic budgeting too. And I know at the organization that I work for, we try and make budgeting as realistic as possible. So even even with assets that are primarily for our own internal use, if they do get rented out on occasion, we try and make sure we capture that in a budget somehow, even if it's conservative. And with something like this, I think you you'd have to err on the conservative side. But I I would like for it to be in there. I would, so I'd love to administration to kind of ask if two hundred thousand is a reasonable number or because of the situation in twenty twenty three being such an anomaly as far as as revenue generated from that, if maybe there's a different number that would be more realistic.
CEO, Vanessa.
Through the chair, if I could, I I can speak to this maybe just generally for our uh, director protective services. Let's speak to it a little bit more detail, but yeah, the the reason that this specific item is not left off is because we didn't want to be relying on this revenue that we have no idea if it'll actually come to fruition. You know, there are other similar items that we do budget for, uh, you know, uh, motor vehicle collisions, you know, there will, you know, there's no guarantee there's gonna be motor vehicle collisions on the highway, but we know that there is every year and we base that on actual actuals and we, while conservative, we're realistic. This one is such an anomaly where some years it's growth and some years it's twenty twenty three, which was far the highest year. And so I think it's a a big leap of faith if you want to tie your operating budgets to 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 a revenue that we don't know if it is gonna come to fruition. I think that's this type of this type of revenue, if it is realized, I think it's more appropriate to go towards reserves because it's not like the revenue is not realized. Uh, and it could offset the future, but we know that through our asset management plan, we are short approximately eight point six million dollars a year on reserves. So to me, I think this would be more appropriate to be um, when there is revenue realized or to go into reserves versus trying to balance the books on something that we don't know will come to fruition, but.
Thank you, CEO. Do you have a follow up? You're good?
No.
Hey, Counselor Chambers.
I through the chair, I do struggle with this as well. I I struggle with it because I do again, for my own budgeting, I I I prefer the conservative style budget. And that if this money comes through, it gives you opportunities, whether that's replacement of things, whether that's straight into reserves wherever it's it's most needed. And I also struggle with with council prescribing a number um, to this. So if it was to meet consensus, is there a a metrics for averaging that could be used by administration to say this is this is what might make sense in a in a conservative manner because absent of that metrics, I can't support the the motion because I think it's it's just a guess. And I think that's tricky. So if there was a more accurate way to come up with what a what a realized budget number could be, then you know, I could potentially support it, but as it's right now, I can't.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. And myself, Mayor, Counselor Reese, Counselor Gavin and Taylor. So my question is to administration, what do commonly do other and I guess to Mr. Devodrap? What are commonly other municipalities do with this? Because I'm sure we're not the only ones that uh, rent or offer equipment and gets, you know, services. Is this something that is commonly other municipalities account for reserve revenue lines?
Through the chair, this 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 may be a bit of a long winded answer, but other meaning, this is a relatively due process for municipalities.
Okay.
Uh, for Alberta wildfire to be utilizing municipal uh, resources for fighting wildfire is new this year. And that's why this year has become quite an abnormal. As widespread as they use municipal services. Uh, there is only three teams in Alberta, the province looking at expanding that. I think I touched on that in the previous presentation. Uh, and they are looking at Hinton to be one of those locations. And I would love to be one of those locations to provide services to other municipalities at a cost, which would be a revenue stream. Uh, so there is potential. But there is no guarantee that it will be a revenue stream from year to year. So to assign a number, if we are to assign a number, I would want to be extremely conservative on that number. And as CEO pointed out, uh, it would be best in my mind, and if and other municipalities do this as well, is they assign those funds, whatever revenue they generate in this manner to a reserve fund. It's it's not to offset your operating budget.
Yeah. So if I can follow up with that, thank you. So that wasn't too long with it. But that's my struggle with this one is I don't see it as a revenue. I mean, a big part of the reason I supported a lot of the capital projects is because of the potential revenue that we could then offset those costs to cut pay for those that equipment that both benefits us. So I think that based on that 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 statement that this is a relatively new phenomenon and and the fact that we aren't necessarily picked yet as that maybe at that time, when we know for certain that we're one of those go to communities that say, yes, you're gonna be our first call. That then maybe is a is a conversation to look at that. But currently, right now, based on a what if maybe I I don't know if we could, plus it did not mean the revenue to operational. I want that to go back to our fire department and and to, you know, because there is those expenses there and this is an opportunity to offset some of those expenses. So that's where I'm at at this one. So.
Okay, if I may add to that. I would like to look approach it as the way you presented. There is no budget, but there's no guarantee that there's something there. Let's put our money, whatever we need to reserve, which is still controlled by council. If I want to spend reserves, I have to come to council. And let's look at it. Let's see what the province does. Because they may change their whole program in a year or two. Uh, so let's see what they do and pivot from there. Uh, start making few, uh, because the the decision to add revenue stream into a budget, it's not a target bad. I would like it to be conservative. But I would also like to have the flexibility for now to pivot to the changing environment to work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Unchief Devodrap and CEO.
This is more of a high level comment, but the one thing I want to just point out is the town of Hinton is gonna be here for probably longer than all of our lifetime and this will offset tax funding, right? But you don't see that direct relationship right here, right now, right? But you know, we we have a a choice on this and many other things where we can directly attribute it to one year's budget to offset this one year. Or we can look at this as more of a also longstanding item because eventually we are going to need to replace our assets. Eventually, we are going to need to replace our fire trust. And those reserves either come from the or the funding for these assets either come from reserves that are built up through things like wildfire revenue and and other revenue generating. Or they're used to offset your operating budget directly in one year. And then you're gonna have to tax to make those expenditures to contribute towards your service. So looking at this from a long term perspective, it does offset, it's just you don't, it does offset your tax rate. It just doesn't have that direct relationship of two hundred thousand dollars divided by one third four in this particular year. But looking at this from a long standing, stable budgeting practice, that's I think why it would be for my preference to look at putting this into into reserves versus offsetting operations.
Thank you, CEO. I have some.
Thank you, Chair. During the chair of administration, you can clarify my understanding of this, but my understanding of the situation is we had fire equipment. It it was utilized by other agencies and we brought in a bunch of revenue for that. And that revenue goes directly into the fire rescue equipment reserve. And then that fire equipment rescue reserve is how we're doing the capital projects for the new equipment that is not only replacing the equipment that we had in service that brought in the revenue, but because of the revenue that it brought in, we're actually able to upgrade our equipment with the the situation, the practices that we have now. Is that all correct?
Through the chair, that is a very good summation. Yes.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
That to me sounds like a responsible long term practice where we're not only are we funding, but we're managing to upgrade our capital without any cost to our taxpayers. And we have the potential to really increase our level of service with no cost to our taxpayers. And given the surrounding forest and the state of the environment in these days, I think having improved equipment and maintaining our equipment and continuing to improve our readiness is is worthwhile. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Counselor Reese, Counselor McGinn, and then Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions. My first question is for Counselor Taylor. Uh, this money, did you want this to go into general? Uh, this um, money, did you want this to go into general revenue or a specific new reserve?
No, I felt it was appropriate to go into general revenue. The fire equipment in the first place was paid for a general revenue. This is generating revenue, goes back in a general revenue. If it wants to get assigned in a particular location, after it goes in there, it can be uh, decided by council where the the need of the day is to put it. That's why I think it's appropriate to go back into general.
And my next question is to administration. How long do we wait for um? You know, we invoice for deployment. How long does it take to get that money?
To share to all committee, uh, it typically it takes a few weeks. We are still waiting on a couple of invoices from the Northwest Territories. Uh, the final invoices just went up there. Two weeks ago. Oh, so we're still waiting on the payment for those, but there isn't a long delay. Uh, for the payment.
You know, because I'm thinking that new vehicle that we are going to get in our capital. Take that four hundred and seventy thousand dollar a month. That generates ninety eight hundred dollars a day and a month. We would see three hundred thousand dollars. So hopefully whatever.
Through the chair, uh, ninety six hundred dollars a day.
Ninety-six. Well, it's still a pretty penny at the end of the month. Yeah.
Hey, uh, sir. All right, Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I question, and I I ask it in relation to building an analogy. Admin, can you clarify, do we still budget for the sale of bulk water? Through the chair.
Yes.
And 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 I guess my follow up question to that, because I see a a bit of a parallel, at least the way my my brain works. Um, is that a pre, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is. We don't know what those total bulk water sales over the course of the year will be. We find that out more towards the end of the year. And then if if that's correct, is that, uh, do those revenues go into operating or do those revenues go into reserves?
Sorry, the one revenues would go into operating first and then any. Uh, excess or unexpected would be going into the water sewer major reserve.
So so and if I could just get clarification then, Mr. Chair. And my understand is the first part of that uh, assumption or understanding is wrapped in that. That is a number that we don't know until after all the sales and the fiscal years are completely correct.
That's your old committee. That is correct, where we have a little bit of differences. People are signing up for a bulk water account. So we do have the number of customers and we do have some historical data on. That type of usage based on industry.
So if I may then, so I I guess my concern is that. I think we have a bit of a, and I understand that, you know, there's there's water accounts and that sort of thing. I think perhaps there's a bit of a middle of the ground or a middle of the road approach that could be pursued. I I like um. Trying to be predictable in our budgeting, and I'm all for understanding that, you know. If we were to pursue something like this, you know, we don't want to go. High five hundred thousand. I think that's that's a little bit much. I'm not even sure if I support two hundred thousand, but I think I do support trying to build into the budget. At least a predictor of what we think that revenue will be, much in the same ways our practices with bulk water. We try to anticipate what those revenues will be so that we're budgeting accordingly. Um, further, I think to where Counselor Taylor is going is um, directing funds into general revenue. Again, with a bit of the middle of the road approach. I think understanding that there's fiscal pressures that citizenry faces right now. Uh, and long term reserve pressures, again, you, we could craft policy or we could make budget policy. That splits some of that funding into reserve and some of it into operating to seek a bit of a balance. So I'm, I think I'm. I'm potentially willing to support the direction on the table, or at least hopefully, you know, modify the number based on. If admin has a a better, a more reasonable number that they think might be a good predictor. Um, a hundred thousand dollars. I was just trying to think about what had been predicted in the past. I'd be supportive of that as well, but in principle, I think I do support the direction that this consensus motion is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn, Counsel Taylor, and then Counsel Stachik. Yeah, two points, uh, speaking to the point you made, uh, speaking to the point that um. Uh, Counselor, um. Chambers, sorry. Made, um, I just picked two hundred thousand. I'm not married to the number, like I agree with you. Let's let's ask, you know, let's change two hundred thousand dollars to budget a five year average for wildfire deployment for net revenue for two thousand twenty-four. Let's get a three, a five year average. I don't even have the, uh, like I said, two thousand twenty-two average. But the point is, this is not a leap of faith. This is not a leap of faith, because it was used as a sales technique. In the budget information that we got. So they think that this is a predictable thing to, uh. They think that this is uh, something that's realistic enough to use it as a sales feature to get this piece of it. But so it seems reasonable that we use it for, um, you know, a conservative estimate of the rep. So I can change, or we can change, like Counsel McGinn said, the two hundred thousand to the five year average or. Or something similar, and then the fire department could come back with that estimate, just like we do with bulk water sales. I mean, we have lots of things that go up and down and fluctuate. The revenue isn't perfect every year. That's not a reason not to have it in the budget, or we could take all that other stuff up. Right? Okay, thanks. Thank you, uh, Counsel Stachik, and then Minister Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so when this was first brought forward, I was in favor of it. I supported it. I thought that was a good idea. Anything that we could. Do to bring more clarity to the operational budget, so we can try and steer away from things like uh. Eight hundred thousand dollar operational budget surpluses like we had a couple of years ago. Is good in my books. Uh, that was why I was supporting it. It's not a hill I'll die on whether it's included or not. But the one. Operational change that's clearly absent from the motion is that revenue is not to go into the. Fire rescue equipment reserve any longer, but to go to general revenue. That's where I have a problem. Um. It's the fire rescue equipment that's going out on these calls. That's the equipment that's receiving the wear and tear. That's the equipment that is going to need to be replaced. Uh, if the revenue is not coming back and being available to replace those units. I don't feel that there's any incentive to send them out to do uh, services to other communities. If it's going back into the fire rescue equipment reserve. I would support it if it's going into general revenue. Fire equipment's too expensive. It's too impactful when it does need to get replaced. And if we can have a reserve that helps offset the costs, so we're not borrowing so much. And we're not financing the purchases that way. That's what I would support, but not rolling that revenue into general revenue. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Stachik, Mr. Mayor, and then Counsel McGinn.
I'm not going to support this consensus either, and and the reason being. I can foresee a year where this fire equipment is employed by the town of Hinton. The town of Hinton is not going to pay us two hundred thousand dollars to deploy that that equipment for ourselves. And then we're looking at a budget shortfall in an emergency. I don't think it's worth it. It has a negative effect on our. Our tax increase this year, one way or another. It's a paperwork exercise, so I'm not going to be supporting this consensus. Thank you.
Good, Counsel McGinn.
Um, administration, I've heard a lot around um. My fellow counselors' concerns around the impact to equipment and how this plays into the equipment reserve, which I do agree with. But the one thing I'm wondering if we're overlooking is the fact that if we are increasingly sending out our firefighters. Uh, onto calls, uh, wildfire calls, um, you know, as requested for mutual aid for wildfires. Um. That potentially puts them as individuals at risk, which potentially if they're injured, uh. You know, can activate life insurance policies or personal injury policies. Which potentially has the impact of driving up our rates. If we're putting more of our firefighters into dangerous positions over the long term, that's operation, correct?
Yes, you're the somebody. Uh, insurance and all the extended healthcare is definitely operational.
So again, I and I agree with my fellow counselors that there's an impact to. To equipment, but I think we're overlooking that there's personnel being called out on these calls. And that if we're putting them into increased dangerous positions, that does have an impact on our operations. If we're potentially going to impact our insurance premiums. Uh, and we don't know what the impact of that is yet. I guess that's just my concern. Uh, but again, I'll continue to support it, and that's the last time I'll speak to it.
Thank you. I have myself and then Counsel Stachik. So an interesting point was brought up by Mr. Bear that I want to follow up on and add this about. So. If we do have a fire. But uh, but that was a bit, uh, but uh, anyway, so. We're gonna also need aid. So in the future, will that aid potentially also come from the reserves? Granted, council makes a decision, but would would administration be coming back to us and saying, look. We had to pay ninety eight hundred dollars a day on another unit to come in and assist us. Would that also potentially be asked to come from reserves, not operational? And I'll follow the reason being is because, I mean. I mean, granted, we're going to make a lot of money or could potentially make that goes back into reserves to pay for the equipment. You know, but at the end of the day, we might also need to pay those bills too. So would it be i- i- your intent to bring it from reserves or operational in those cases and that potential?
So when we met, uh. Earlier in the fall and I did the the brief overview of the reserve reserves. And the new potential new structure, that is one of the reasons for having the emergency management classification. So that we have those monies available um, in the event that we are defending ourselves and having to pay those. Costs to another municipality.
So with that, uh, I I won't be supporting this. I think that we need to have those dollars also. That is benefiting from the equipment we had in reserves in the in the potential that. We may have to access that for for assistance, just like we've been assisting others as well. So. I just don't see this as a revenue for operation. This is specific to that department. Thank you. Uh, Counsel Stachik.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I have my own question, but I have a follow up to yours too. Just need some clarification. Sorry, what reserve did you say that would come from if we had to pay another municipality to help us?
Uh, through the panel committee, I was referring to when we met in October and I did the brief presentation saying. The reserve structure could be broke down into these. Different pockets and then from there the money further allocated by council. And one of them was a reserve management fund reserve, which may. Also include the the current reserves for fire. I haven't completely finished that presentation or that. Structure and it will be coming back to committee for further discussion.
Um, I may have assumed wrong. I assumed that was what the emergency response reserves was for.
Through the committee, it absolutely is. That one would move over if the eligibility structure, if the structure was approved for. But for sure, uh. The intention moving forward is to ensure that we're funding all of our areas of the municipality. And there's good structure behind why we're doing that and how we're doing that.
Thank you for your chair, Mr. Love. We can ask, or sorry, your louder. So, um, and and this is a follow up to Counseline McGinn's question about uh. Uh, expenses related to sending these units out, including. Uh, the life insurance premiums if there's claims, but also. And the the actual expense, the fuel expense and the and the labor expense and. I I made the assumption, and maybe I made it incorrectly, so I should clarify. I made the assumption that what got transferred was to reserves was net revenue. So that it's gross revenue less the expenses of carrying out the exercise. And then the neck is what goes into the reserve. Is that right or is that wrong?
Um, through the, through the chair to all of committee, that is how if. If I was to print the year to date actuals, we would not see five hundred thousand dollars in fire revenue. As the invoices are generated and we check for payment come in, they're put into a. Reconciling account and then it is what is left after our expenses are covered. That we bring forward to go into reserves. So we are covering our costs of doing that deployment from that revenue.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Yeah, you're welcome. All right, so committee, anyone, Counsel Taylor.
One final point I hope people realize is we only deploy uh, if we don't need the equipment ourselves. It's a fire chief decision, so. In any case, we protect.
So I think if I may clarify, I guess, I think that's kind of what I was talking to. But I think we may not have enough equipment to you need to fight the fire, so we're not going to. Said, but we may need others, you know, is what I I in that's what we refer to. I just clarify. Okay. Counsel Reese.
Thank you, sir. Quick question to Counsel Taylor. So you you want. An amount to go into general revenue. Uh, is there a specific use in general revenue that you're looking at or just to?
No.
Just to go in.
Yeah. Okay, Counsel Stachik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, if the intent is for that to go into general revenue, I think it's important that the motion. Cause right now it doesn't. It just says that we have a budget line item for two hundred thousand.
So Counsel, you're looking for a friendly amendment to. Just the wording, so.
If that was Counselor Taylor, then yes, I would like to. I would like counsel's consideration to add where that revenue is is supposed to go. It brings additional clarity to the to the direction request.
So the wildfire deployment to the general revenue. That's for you. Okay. And I see CEO Nasek has his hand up. No, you're good. Only to general revenue in twenty twenty-four. Counsel, is there any objections to that for that change of wording? See now, okay. All right, well, counsel, I think, or committee, I think we've uh, had heard from everyone, so we're going to call the question now. Then we seek consensus that wildfire deployment revenue. Uh, that the town direct administration would budget for two hundred thousand for wildfire deployment to general revenue in twenty twenty-four. And we will vote electronically, please. Please vote now. And that is defeated uh, with Counsel McGinn and Counsel Taylor in favor. Oh, yeah. Okay. Just your clarification, I I'm sorry, I think I said first, the the candle is. That the town direct administration uh, seek consensus that towns or committee corrected the construction. Does the change that? That doesn't change the handle that, so. Okay. All right, uh, counsel, moving on to any other, oh, CEO, Vanessa.
Oh, no, sorry, Chair. I thought you were going to finish before I jumped in.
Oh.
But it it's okay with the chair and members of the committee, we could. Uh, start on the operational business cases, we could go through those next year that uh, committee is buying. Want in the general budget for, if you need those discussions.
Sure, it would, yeah. Okay, so let's then look at the uh. The operational business case scenario or cases that. See, so through the chair, uh, we we are here to just for. Answer any questions or vote for any of the existing OBCs that have been provided in the past. For counsel to reconsider or have additional questions. And we also do have a uh, addition that has been sent out to council for an additional OBC, uh, this was today. Um, for generation, so uh. At the chair's discretion, we could discuss the. Uh, the ULC first, and then we could go into the specific OBCs. Yeah, we'll run it like that, like we did the other. So we'll uh, we'll start off with the the proposed unit, uh, OBC then. I believe that's instrument. Oh, sorry.
Just a quick, I I'm just gonna ask for the excuse for about maybe twenty minutes. I'm really not feeling that great. Just get a little air and see if it passes.
Okay.
That's all right.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chair. Right.
And through the Chair to administration, is it possible that that will be busy?
Uh, generally, that will be see what you do.
Is it on agenda? Which one is it?
Is it on agenda? Which one is it? In your email, do I'm gonna send it to you? Yes.
Well, we're bringing it up if you were. Start to speak to it.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Chair. So, committee, the operational business case being put forward was, was brought forward by myself. Uh, it's seeking to hire an executive assistant for. Uh, the use of, of council in the mayor's office and to keep the. Budget neutral aspect of it by re, uh. Reutilizing the mayor's honorarium. Uh, as the budget item to pay for this. Uh, the reason that I'm asking for this is, uh, it's. Become clear through observing council and administration that the existing administrative, uh, assistant support is. Uh, very busy. And split duties between council and the, the CAO's office. Uh, I think there's a lot of efficiency in terms of our operations to be had by having council have one point of contact with. With administrator or through our own, uh, administrative assistant. To administration, uh, our amendments, uh, can be communicated smoothly, clearly in a. Well thought out format and, uh, most importantly on Tuesdays, the, uh, CAO's administrative assistant or executive assistant. Is busy getting meeting minutes, getting all of our, uh, printed reports ready. Preparing for the council meetings. We, we would have somebody dedicated at that time to actually get our question. Uh, do some of that research. Uh, as I mentioned, I want to keep this a budget neutral item by foregoing the mayor's honorarium of sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh, to allow for, uh, the budgeting of a position and when we get the OBC up there, uh, so. We'll see that there's a, a few options HR has to work on, some of the details around the position. Uh, what the request here will be for a maximum of the, the sixty thousand dollar amount. Uh, probably filled in with point A position, from my understanding, but that's up to administration to determine based on their collective bargaining. At that point, I will take questions or questions to the administration, but.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, committee, we have a. Proposed OBC here for discussions, any questions or comments? Counselor Taylor?
Well, he could be frank, uh, you just got here, how do you really know what you need? Like, do you think we should maybe wait a few months and see, see?
Thank you. Uh, so this, if we start actioning this now, we'll be into Q two of next year. By the time we're able to hire somebody, if we wait at this point, we're going to run out the clock on this. I would like to give this a, a good shot. I think that, uh. I think there'll be a help for, for everybody on council. I think it'll help our meetings run a little bit smoother and, uh. Quite frankly, our existing executive assistant is doing the job of four people. It's incredible, but we can be more efficient here. Thank you.
So, I have myself, Counselor Chambers and Counselor Stashik. Um, I, I appreciate the intent, I, I do, I, I think that it's, but my concern. Is, is the precedent that we're setting for future mayors. Um, I appreciate the fact that you are, you know, uh. Forgiving that honorarium, however, I don't believe the future mayors and I don't know what you're, you know, I don't wanna perceive that, but I mean. You know, uh, i- it sets a precedent, uh, a position only on that and we can't assume that the next. Uh, position of mayor, whoever is in that position is able to do this. If the intent is to be a full-time job, paid for a full-time, uh, mayor. Um, and the idea behind the remuneration is to attract that and they are more focused on their position, um. So my concern is that that it may be a temporary position, it may always go back potentially. But my other concern and my question to is a couple of things. First of all is, um. Can this be done, uh, procedurally with our remuneration policies and everything that we have in place? That, you know, uh, with this OBC, is that the way it's presented? Is it even possible? And my second question to administration, is it gonna be cost, um, uh. Even with all benefits and everything else that would also be included in position, so.
So, through the Chair and members of council, there, there are definitely some steps that we need to do this specifically, uh. I don't have all the particular answers, but this is. Absolutely possible, uh, I just don't know exactly how we do it right at this moment, whether it's, uh, through a bylaw change. Whether it's just a reallocation through, uh. The budget, but it's, it's certainly possible. Uh, and yes, the intent would be that this would be a cost neutral item, so if we would just have to. You know, once we look at this a little bit closer, we would just have to end it, we would have to take a look at. How much time the person would be, how much they'd be. They'd be paid, what benefits they're entitled to, I mean, all of those have to be flushed out, but, um. But, y- y- you know, those are all details that will work through, but the premise is, is that. This will be a cost control and we'll just have to adjust the position accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Chambers.
I think, uh, through the Chair. I think this is a, a very interesting thing. I definitely agree, um. With mayor that. There seems to be an awful large workload. Put onto the existing admin. But that being said, the fact that fresh eyes see it in that way, I don't know if that means that. You should necessarily be giving up your honorarium to fix that, um. I think it's, you know, admirable for sure, but I also feel. We would all be using that position, um. At a financial loss to you as an individual, and, and I think it's great that you bring it up, but I think that needs to be considered that. Are we missing? I, again, I get it, tough budget year or all those things, but we need to look if, if the workload that we have as council. Is as such and it is intended to stay as such. Should we be looking at this organizationally of, do we need to add this type of position in? Period, not just on a short term. At your honorarium, so I, I do agree that I think it, it would help from the, and again, I agree little that we've seen so far. But again, fresh eyes, right? It's a different, we're coming from, uh, you know, different industries and how we look at things, but. I just don't know if it's. If it's a real true organizational need and, and maybe that's what this term is about, is fleshing out whether it is or it isn't, and, and I guess maybe to your point. It's, it's a neutral financial item, so we can see, is that impact necessary? We have to bring that back, um. But I would, from administration, I would be interested to hear your thoughts because it's, you know, is it something that. That you guys agree with, that would help with the workload, um, and some of those things, because there's just never enough. Administrators go around, it seems like lots of the time.
Is that a question to administration or?
Yeah, like, yeah, do they agree with the, the?
So, but, sorry, uh, to you, Ms.
Through the Chair to members of council. Um, to be perfectly frank, this is a new one for me and a new relationship, so I, I, I haven't sorted my way through this completely. And to understand exactly, you know, where the division of labor is, what type of relationship, so it's very much new to me, um. You know, but I, you know, I think the. The premise of it is good, you know. You know, the fact is, is there will always, no matter what, there will always be more work than there are people, right? You know, that's just, that's a universal fact for. Most, uh, and it depends on how many, so how much resources you're willing to put at that, right? So, uh, so short answers, absolutely, we will utilize this position, uh, you know, and, and I think that we just have some. You know, we'll, we'll have some more work to do as administration to, you know, um, make sure that that's an appropriate relationship, but this isn't. This isn't new with novel, right? You know, um. There are many communities who have this type of position, so it's just not one that I personally. But so, um, it'll absolutely be utilized, um, should, you know, as effectively as we possibly can, um. And I think that, you know, that will just take a little bit of time, so.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Stashik, Counselor Magoon, myself and Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, I just wanted. Point out to anybody who might be watching or for myself with council. This came very, very late today. This came in an email that was at. Three oh eight PM, I think. So it didn't make its way to the package and anybody that's gonna be watching at home and who may have downloaded the package. Is gonna have no idea what we're talking about, so that's the first thing, uh, I always have reservations about, uh. Considering things that come out of the blue like this and makes me uncomfortable with no time to review, no time for. Input, no time for recommendations from administration, no time for consult consultation with. That said, though, I do have some reservations. I'm, I'm concerned about. How this individual would fit into the organization structure. Cause I'm reading through the, uh. Through the business case and what's kind of the implication that they're an employee of council, which would be difficult. To fit in per the mandate, to the mandated structure of a municipal organization. With the CAO being council's one and only employee, who would this individual answer to or be accountable to? Uh, in addition to that, I appreciate the perception that's brought forward. That, uh, administration is. Maybe overburdened in that capacity. But with that said too, it's also. The responsibility to, of administration through this very exercise that we're doing today, the operational budget. To notify council of any of those staffing shortfalls, shortcomings. And put a request forward for a new position. Because that didn't come from administration. I don't feel that administration sees that as being. A top priority to get somebody else into. Support administration, be able to assist council exclusively. And if it did, I feel. Per the mandated structure of how a municipal organization works, that's the decision of the CAO. CAO says we need some more administrative support to better support council. We need to hire somebody, we need to put forward a, a business case to create a new position, et cetera, et cetera. That said, I also have to say that I agree with Counselor Taylor somewhat. Only been here a short time and I'm not really. I, I, I'm questioning whether you have a, a full understanding of whether it's working or not. For myself, I've been on council for eight years and it's been this structure for the whole eight years I've been on it. And I actually don't see a need to create this type of position at, at this point, for sure, so. I, I appreciate the intent, I appreciate that being brought forward, but I don't think it's something that I'm gonna support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stashik. I have Counselor Magoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, for myself, I have a, I have a number of concerns. I think the first, you know, all sort of. Echo Counselor Chambers' comments is that I think the exploration of a position. And providing a case study solely focused on what's the job. Or if we're missing a job in the organization is sort of the essential focus that would need to happen. I, I was driving when this came in, so this is sort of my first go around. I have to apologize if you're getting it a little bit more frankly than I might normally give. I. The whole concept of trading off. An honorarium to fund that position, while I understand where it's coming from, it, it makes me deeply uncomfortable. Uh, because, well, a couple of different reasons. The first is that we have a remuneration committee that's, uh, staffed by. Uh, citizens from the community. The important focus there is that it is never ever. Counselors, uh, who are making decisions about their own remuneration. Council for the most part. With the exception of receiving that report in council chambers, shouldn't be making that decision, even. Uh, especially for their own term. It's always made for the subsequent term, when you never know who's gonna be on the next council. And what is really digging at the corner of my brain and making me uncomfortable. Uh, is actually something that I've highlighted to other counselors in the past, which is. You know, why in the past I've sought standardized reporting tools where counselors themselves are not reporting on their own hours. They're working through staff members, uh, in the organization, because I think what exists potentially. Is the opportunity to trade an honorarium for political capital within the, within the communities and say, well, you know what? As a counselor, you know, don't pay me at all and I'm your best deal counselor for the next election. Uh, that makes me uncomfortable. It is a fair rate of, uh. Remuneration that's set by members of the community from the past council and then it stays there, uh. Changing that right now, if we budgeted for that right now, we would actually be budgeting against an existing policy. Uh, within the organization and I, I would feel really uncomfortable by, uh, in budgeting against policy. And then going and changing the policy to meet that budget. Uh, just, there's a whole bunch there that makes me uncomfortable. I, I couldn't support it. Thank you.
Magoon, Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, my question is to admit, have we given Jen additional duties since she's been in that chair? Or is she still doing the same work that, that Wendy did, that Lil did, or? It sounds like we've given her additional work.
Through the Chair, uh, Jen is shaking her head. Uh, my, I've known Jen for a year, but, uh, since that time, um.
Sorry, one point of order, Mr. Chair, and respectfully, very respectfully. I'm uncomfortable discussing an individual's assigned roles and job description in a public setting.
Right on. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I just wanna know, like, what happened here to, to cause this?
If I may, it was an observation that was made and brought to OBC that.
I'm sorry?
It was an observation made by the member that brought this forward and that's where it came from, so. If I, so we'll leave it at that, with the point of order. I have, uh, uh, Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor.
So, I understand the reservations. I understand the honorarium issue. The point of the honorarium is to enable a full-time mayor. The reality is, I'm a disabled veteran. I have multiple documented disabilities. Accommodations processes are terrible to go through. They're barriers to success. An assistant, a proper. Nearly full-time assistant. Means my disabilities aren't a, a problem in work. This is an ask for a temporary position for a year and roughly eight months. Funded. In a budget-neutral way, but if we wanna talk about the funding, that's okay. I can tell you that a sixty thousand dollar honorarium does not enable me to succeed as a full-time mayor. An assistant, absolutely will. I have nerve damage, bad back, all kinds of things. I don't really wanna get into public. This, to me, looked like a cost-effective solution and to, uh, some counselors' points, it wasn't brought by administration. Because they gave me the opportunity to bring it myself and bring it early to council, so that we can discuss this. Uh, but ultimately, this is so that I can do my job. And it's a bonus that this po- this position will be able to help the rest of council. And to take some workload off of administration. But to give you a prime example of what this is for. Today, uh, the CAO and I were given a last-minute meeting with our MLA. And the Minister of, uh, Transportation to discuss a very important and high-value issue tomorrow. Somebody needs to prepare the briefing notes for that. Somebody needs to coordinate with the minister's assistant. Uh, we need clarification on information and we're all in a committee meeting right now. There's nobody that can be on the phone. Talking to the, the minister's assistant, gain clarification, so that administration doesn't spend the whole day tomorrow wasting their time on something. That might or might not be necessary. Uh, the reality is, we have a lot of projects that want outside. Uh. Connection. We wanna build relationships in Edmonton, we wanna build relationships in Ottawa, uh, we want a full-time mayor. This is what we need to have a, an effective full-time mayor and, uh. To the remuneration point, uh, I see it, if we, if we can't do this within council. Uh, I'm going to be paying for an assistant with that remuneration personally. And that's gonna cost more and it won't be leading to success as a full-time mayor, because that person won't be able to have the same access. To the administration systems, same access as an employee, uh, there'll be a third-rate employee. Working within our organization, um. I'd like to do this correctly and the only ask here today, actually, and, uh, we can put this up, is that. Uh, we allow administration to continue going forward and investigating the reality of how this is working. That's it. There's no other ask at this stage. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Stashik and then Counselor Magoon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate clarification on the intent of this coming forward. I have to admit, this was out of the blue and completely unexpected. Not something that I had heard anything. Not something that I had heard anything about. Prior to the bi-election, during the bi-election or post-bi-election, so. Um as for myself, just speaking for myself, I don't see. I don't personally see any value in adding this position. It doesn't do anything. To enhance my ability to do the job that I was elected for. Um. And for that reason, I'd like to seek consensus of committee to not include the mayor and council assistant operational business case. In the twenty twenty four budget. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, councillor Stasich. Committee, we have a consensus. Uh councillor McGoon, are you still in the queue?
I, yes, please. Okay. Um because I think it still applies to, I I guess my question to administration and I would have. Rather have this discussion in closed session now, understanding the full context. Um but my my question to administration is someone who also deals with these sorts of questions. Um is a councillor not afforded uh and by council, I mean any member of council, not afforded the same uh. Rights uh or sorry, does the town not have the same duty to accommodate uh council?
Mister Chair, I will refer that to our uh to finish our madness hope.
Thank you. Um I would need to look more into it, but off the top of my head, um our duty to accommodate is for employees council. It's not employees of the town. Um but also there is a threshold for duty to accommodation, so there's more information that's required and more uh steps. To go through before you can determine duty to accommodate, so. I have a D margin.
Thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
Yeah, I don't support this. I need to know more about what this position does. Like, some of these I've listed here is what this position does. Uh to me, do briefing notes, uh do research. Last stuff, if you've got the consensus of council and you convince council that it's something you're gonna go ahead with. Then administration would support you to do. It's the way it seems to work for a long time. If you don't admit it's support from council, then. Probably shouldn't be committed anyway. So I need a little bit more information about what's going on to support this. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Committee, any further questions or discussion on this matter, on this consensus? Yes, councillor Reese.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I will not support this motion. I think if this is something that our mayor is saying. It's gonna help him be the best mayor he can be for the next eighteen months. And if it's gonna help council be the best council, I'm on for it, but I will not support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Reese. Committee, any other further comments? Or call this consensus in question? Seeing that, hold.
I, yeah, just just briefly, um. I wish I had had more time to understand that this motion was coming because I think I would have recommended that it was. Uh brought forward in closed session. Um again, I apologize. I was driving at three oh eight on my way here. I think it it deserved more respect than an open. Open council discussion, so. Uh yeah, I just wish I had had a chance to talk with you prior to. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Good. Seeing our discussion, I'm gonna call to question then that we seek consensus to not include the mayor and council assistant. In the twenty twenty four budget. We will be moving electronically. There it is. Okay.
Okay, sorry, let me clarify what I'm voting for, please. So if I vote for. If I vote for this, then this is, we're getting, this is, this won't happen.
This was not included.
Okay.
Proceeding since did not include there. Okay. Okay, so we're calling question to seek consensus to not include the mayor and council assistant twenty twenty four budget. Please vote. And that is. Carried uh with three against uh Mister Mayor, councillor Reese and councillor Chambers. Okay. Thank you. To committee and administration on that, we now will move to the existing O B Cs. Discussion and questions with that. Administration.
To the chair, if I could, if I could start off, I um I know that the or some additional questions. That were included in the professional I P services uh based on the last. Uh meeting of council, so Mister DeBoer, I'd like to clarify a few of the questions related to doing that service in-house.
Okay. Chief DeBoer. Uh so Chair, I guess there was a question about whether they. Uh serve hygiene services could be done in-house. Uh and I added the comment to the risk assessment. Uh and I'll read it for money's sake, uh so much for yours. In-house expertise is available, however, health and safety will require a budget to rent equipment and use the consultants to analyze to review the data. The town has used consultants in the past to provide equipment where the town collects the data through the instruments. Cost savings may include uh dispersments and onsite travel time. If completed in-house, our occupational health and safety coordinator does have the expertise, however. To sign off on a report, data analyzed and recommendations based certified hygienist should review the data and sign off. As our occupational health and safety coordinator is not certified as a hygienist. So we still have to contract out those services.
So Mister DeBoer, if we could just go clarification for us and council, which O B C exactly this one was, so we could be looking at it?
My apologies, that that would be the industrial hygiene services.
Okay. Ten?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh council, I guess, based on that information, thank you for bringing that, Chief DeBoer from the. Is there any questions on this matter while we're fresh, uh?
Yeah, so sorry, just a a clarification then, uh chief, and I, this is my understanding. It was, this one was pretty simple for me, so let me know if I'm wrong. We can't do this in-house, but we're mandated to do this, so somebody has to do it.
Through the chair, that is absolutely correct.
Easy. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you, uh Chief DeBoer and C E O Panasek. Uh so we'll move on to then the other matters. Do you wanna just head heading these in order that's listed on the screen there for councils? Uh any cons- questions or discussion or do you consider, is that how we wanna manage it?
While I get you through the chair, sorry. I uh have a good chocolate. Um. Because we've already gone through this, um as long as council's comfortable with where that was stance, um. I would be okay to just identify and discuss particular topics of concern or or just needs further discussion for council. To uh to direct that.
Right on. Okay, so we're talking about the list in front of us, so council uh or committee, we have councillor Taylor. And then councillor Griggs.
What I'm gonna say is, uh don't take it in context. Uh the context is that we've got a seven point six percent tax increase and. People that I talk to, that's just not acceptable. So, the things that I'm doing, I'm trying to get the budget down to a uh a lower level so that uh. Uh people on uh lower incomes or fixed income types can be uh. Not hit hard, but yet again, like tax increase. So with respect to this, uh one of the suggestions uh. That came forward. Was uh the one regarding minor reductions to the operational business cases. And uh. The consensus there, um Jen. Was, I think it's number eight, was the seek consensus, minor reductions to operational business cases of fifteen percent. I'm not fussy whether any of these categories, uh. Uh asset managing garbage bins, water and sewer in the forty. Uh attraction and uh retention actually had two thousand dollars for welcome gift baskets for long-term service awards. So what I'm trying to do is get somehow get the tax rate down to a level. That is affordable and acceptable to people in town and that's what I'm trying to do with a motion like this and. I believe that's a reasonable motion. I see their support for it. A log service towards, but I seen an end, so just. Yeah, that's my statement. So altogether, those categories add up to about two hundred thousand dollars, uh I believe. Uh I added them up to sort of fifty percent would get us down by about uh thirty thousand. Which will get us a quarter point three of a percent, which will take that seven point six down to seven point three. Seven point two five, which is, which is a start in a long process that I think we have to go through tonight to have an acceptable budget. And these are just my ideas, but I welcome all your ideas. I'm sure you guys can think of ideas as well.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor McGoon.
I just.
Oh, I'm, pardon me. Sure, pardon me, councillor Reese.
Uh thank you very much, sir. So a question I have is councillor Taylor. At our first operating and not all discussion, the garbage bins were setting up, I believe, fifty thousand dollars and you put for. The consensus to drop to twenty-five thousand. And now you're asking for an additional fifteen percent on that one five.
Grouping all these items in together. I'm grouping all these items in together, uh. In order to get uh further reductions from the budget to help with the tax rate increase. It's one of the ways I've come up with, this is a. Something we can do, because I can't support a seven point six percent tax increase and I'm looking to ways to bring bring it down. And that it it's gonna be, I think it's gonna involve hard decisions. Uh tonight, yes, at some place.
So I can't support a seven point six uh tax increase either, but I do have to ask it in relation to this. If we delay these garbage bins this year, are we just gonna be paying more next year? And we'll ask Mr. About things.
Uh, yeah, through through the committee, uh. To talk about the garbage bins, um so this year we had difficulty and we actually had to. Uh overspend on the budget and make it up in another spot because we had no money for the purchase of bins. So we brought this forward, knowing that every year we're going to have uh some replacement of bins necessary, whether that be. Uh new people signing up or replacements of the old ones. So originally, we thought that a uh a five and a half, a five percent. Uh replacement strategy uh based over twenty years, you would always have bins being replaced and. Uh you would have an ongoing renewal of your bins. Uh when it was cut to two and a half percent, we we said, you know, that'll, I think that'll do for some time because currently all the bins are new. Uh. And and that's how we bought to the twenty-five thousand. In terms of whether we can cut it more. That's a guess. Uh I don't know how many more uh new sign-ups we will have next year. We don't know how many of our current bins will. Get destroyed, but uh at at some point in time, that needs to be a uh a proper dollar value to uh go forward. Um since I'm speaking to it, the uh. Uh the asset management, I uh that that's sort of the highest dollar value one of the the ones up there, so I I wanna speak to it. Um I uh inquired as to what would be the uh outcomes if we were to uh reduce this amount. Um. What we've done with this is we've tried to do a sort of a sprint to get the end so that we could get rid of a duplication of service. Currently, we have uh two pieces of software, citywide, the Winnie site, our uh. Our muni site comes due uh in March and if we don't have a replacement system, we'll have to pay the thirty thousand dollars to keep muni site going. Until such time that we have citywide uh ready for the replacement. Um. So the the cost to delay this uh this hundred and twenty-five thousand or spread it out over a longer period of time over two years. Uh could be done, but it would have the uh potential to uh spend another thirty thousand dollars on muni site software. That being said, when I did review it with the staff today, we did find one spot where we probably knocked five thousand dollars off this item. Uh without optimizing the schedule on it.
Hey.
Thank you, Mister. Uh councillor Stasich. Oh, was I? Yeah, sorry. You're good? Okay, uh councillor Taylor.
The item, the why I combined everything is not to necessarily go for fifteen percent for each, but to allow. Like the way I see this, is we still have another session of the budget, so we we do this and then. Administration can come back and say uh. How they managed, how they managed to do the the fifty percent, it's not necessarily every little thing, it's fifteen percent of it's in this map show goods for two hundred thousand dollars. Have administration to go back and say, where could we get some savings so we can reduce the budget?
Thank you.
So I have myself, um and councillor Chambers, um. I guess my concern is we're focusing on the seven point six and and. In light of, you know, and I did ask administration, but we're looking at with the seven point six, and I'm not saying we can't get it down a little bit more, but. We keep kicking things down. The administration brought us a budget that was what, what was the original number? I was trying to remember, what was it? Twelve percent potentially or fifteen percent with everything that would come to us.
That is correct.
We went through a lot of work as administration and council sat here. And quite frankly, I was kinda shocked at the seven point six. I thought it was gonna be higher. Uh I was kind of actually. Uh somewhat relieved with the seven point six. Um and to me, we just keep kicking it down. This works out to about thirteen dollars per month. Per resident, when it comes to taxes. It comes down to thirteen dollars a month um increase and. The fact of the matter is, everything is going up and higher and higher and this is not new to Hinton. I've been following Alberta Mules and Tyler Gannon, the president, come forward and said. This is a real problem for all municipalities right now. Everything is so expensive. And the question is, do we cut services or do we, you know, bite the bullet and have a bit of a heart, a bigger one? And a lot of people are doing that. Um you know, and we've we've been fiscally responsible tax-wise for so many years and it's it's come to bite us and quite frankly. We start reducing it by fifteen, whether it's garbage bins, whether it's water, sewer and board tory, we're just delaying everything down the road. And I guess that's my major concern, because then we come back next year, we need all that stuff again and then what it is, plus everything else. So, um I think personally that the budget that's come forward is very respectful. Or respectable uh in a way. It it showed administration and we did cut a lot of things, you know, in in the. Both capital and operation to try to be as fiscally responsible as possible, so. I mean, I'm I'm okay with looking at this, but I I can't say that I'd be in favor of it personally at this point, just the way things are going and how the future looks, so. Um and I I know that my last word on that is, this is not a tough budget, this is the reality budget. That's the, we've had tough budgets somewhere, but there's the reality of the world we live in right now and we gotta, we gotta be. Mindful of also uh the services that we provide to our citizens. And I think also to provide to our staff as well. We start reducing, you know, uh what long-term service awards and things like that. Um I think it's important that we also create that morale as well, so I'm not gonna be in favor of this. Thank you. And councillor Chambers.
I totally agree. You said a lot of the things, uh through the chair. Every time I miss that, um. I will not be supporting this. I I definitely think that. Cost savings shouldn't come on the backs of our long-term employees, certainly, and I know you were just lumping it in as as a group.
Yeah.
But I I don't like seeing that word in there at all. Um. The attraction and retention is a massive key issue in our community right now and. I don't think we have enough money in traction and retention personally. Um. And I really just don't like doing claw, just. And kind of back to the earlier stuff too. I I don't like saying just just cut fifteen percent, just cut two hundred thousand, just cut whatever that looks like because. I think if we as a council really feel like we need to save two hundred thousand dollars, we need to be finding a project or something specific that can be. Pulled out or deferred or funded differently or something like that, because you start to nickel and dime each one of these little pieces and you can see it in the. The paperwork. Well, this was pulled, we cut this from last year's budget, now we have to put more in the signed budget. We cut the sand and salt and now we have to do, you know, all those things and. So I I don't like just to, just to go find two hundred thousand dollars. I think if we really feel that that dollar value. Matters as a group, then we need to find a project or something tangible that we can. Pull that from, not just a, and I know this is operating on capital, so maybe project isn't the right term to use, but but I. I I think we have to have the hard conversation and and this this is it and I. I don't, also talking to other municipalities, that seven point six isn't fun. Nobody wants to do that. But we have a business to operate and we have to allow our. Administration and operations teams to do their job, or it's just gonna keep piling up. So I will not be in support of this motion.
Councillor Stasich, you sure to listen?
Yeah, I'm sure this.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, some of the, some of the stuff in this list, I I almost wish they'd come separately. Some of them, I don't know what the impact of the fifteen percent. Some of them, I don't know what the impact of the fifteen percent reduction would be. So it's hard to support, but then there's other things, for example, the water and sewer inventory. I I don't know that it would be that impactful to deduct fifteen percent from that proposal. It basically mean. Spend eighty five percent of what you requested on the the items that are most likely to break. Or the items that are most hard to source, and then prioritize it that way, and then the bottom fifteen percent fall off. So that's something like that. I don't think I'd be too challenged to support. But then there's some of the other things like the garbage bins, which have already been talked about earlier, that they've already been reduced. We're looking at another fifteen percent deduction, and something like that to me is just. It's just kicking the problem down the road. And so that concerns me, and then the asset management part, I don't know, maybe. Maybe for this year, we could get eighty five percent of the work done and actually fully accomplished, and then the other fifteen percent could roll into. Into next year, I don't know what impact that would have, so. And it's a big conversation to to split all those out individually, and I did consider splitting the motion and then went, nah, I don't think I wanna do that. That's a lot of separate items to have long discussions about, so I'm not sure what to do with this one. Looked to the rest of the committee to offer some suggestion, but some of the stuff I wouldn't have a problem with, some of them I just don't know the impact, so.
Hey, Mr. Chair, thank you. Counselor Satchel, Counselor Taylor.
Well, two points, um, I put garbage bins in there. And in reflection, it's kind of a mistake because it was already cut, right? If I thought about that when I was doing this, I probably wouldn't put it in there, so I can take that out. The other point is you both bring up very good points. If you are completely happy with seven point six percent as a tax increase, why not put a motion out? And we can vote in a seven point six percent tax increase, yes or no? And if we vote yes, we can just all go home, really? He just said he's okay with it, but the people I talked to weren't, so that's why I'm going through this. But nothing stops you from putting that motion forward to 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 say that, so that's uh people I've talked to, seven point six percent fine. Nothing stops you from doing that. But uh, no, and if I could exclude garbage bins from that list with the consensus of council, because that is a mistake. That I made, and I wouldn't have made it if I could have overthought, right, because we've already reduced it.
Okay, so Counselor Taylor is amending his uh motion. Is there any objections from council on that? This is our motion, so we're consensus, seeing that, so we will remove that when you counsel tip.
Yeah, and one more point. The traction and retention is extremely important, so I did not not touch the bulk of that. I only touched the welcome gift basket portion of it. So I agree with you on that part, but I don't think we need to give new doctors uh welcome gift baskets, I don't think that'll do very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. I have a follow-up question, so, and there's a lot in this, I wanna just clarify to Ms. Mabel. What was just on that attraction attention, what was the budget? I remember it was two thousand, was it not? Sorry.
Uh, through the chair if I could, it was five and two, uh, I believe that two was specific towards uh, oh, okay. Those kids get back in baskets and similar type initiatives, and then I think basis five thousand.
Okay, thank you. I just, I need to clarification of that, because, yeah, if it would have been just two fifty, I'd nothing. Uh, in my, but anyway, so thank you. Okay, so committee, any further questions or discussion on the consensus? What's forward, Counselor Race?
Thank you, Deputy. So is anybody adding all this up and doing the fifteen percent? Cause I'm thinking it's adding up to maybe what, fifteen thousand dollars, maybe?
Three.
I'm sorry?
Twenty five, thirty.
Twenty five?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Quarter of a percent.
Okay, oh, CEO, fanatic, and then mayor.
Uh, thank you to the chair to the rest of the committee, so. I just want council to know that what we bring forward, we're very cognizant to break for what we believe we need, right? Uh, you know, this was not a lazy budget. This was, we're bringing forward the bare minimum of what we need, because I can assure you that nobody, uh, nobody likes more taxes, right? Stat included, for all residents. But once again, I'll say that, you know, and to Chair's point. It will also be a difficult budget next year, the year after that, um, you know, with asset management, it was spoke to already. Uh, we're gonna be re-upping, it's gonna be need to continue with our systems, thirty thousand dollars, which will completely negate any savings that we're talking about here. Um, the water and sewer inventory, we're, we're not bringing forward a big slush fund to have a whole bunch of extra parts. So we never have to think about it, right? We're doing this because we wanna do what's in the best interest of the community. And having necessary parts on hand for when we need it is important. Um, and we will be burnt on those little things, right? Because we could cut eight thousand, but that will be less parts that we have on inventory. And eventually, we're gonna have to call a hotshot company out from it, again, which will negate those savings. So, you know, we're coming at this from a risk management perspective primarily, and bringing it forward so we can operate effectively. But, um, I do have concerns with, uh, you know, I I think if we look at them individually, then. They're variable, I think we could, you know, I think we can have those discussions, but. You know, there's impacts to every single one of those items, right? And it's been what we brought forward, we we brought forward because we were looking, we we believe that this is the best interest of the municipality. Of course, we can, we'll do less, uh, you know, we can buy less. Uh, inventory for our water system and if they don't break, but once again, it's, it's a risk management thing. And it's an operational effectiveness that, um, that I would be concerned about.
Thank you, CEO. Uh, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. I won't be supporting this mission as, or this motion or consensus, I suppose, as long as asset management is included. Uh, fifteen percent cut to this project kills the project, and we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars in March because of it. That just doesn't make any sense to me, and so as long as it's included, I think it's supportable from my perspective. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, and Councilman McGee.
Just think clarification from the C A O first, please. Uh, so C A O, if I can just confirm, uh, when you were speaking, were you concerned about the consensus on the table? In that it was, um, essentially, you'll forgive the term, that that it would cut too deep. That you thought maybe there was a better way would be to look at specific items one by one, or with more specificity?
Through the merit members of council. You know, I I think there are specific concerns that I outlined, you know, asset management being the one, um. You know, we're gonna have to maintain duplicate systems for another year, which will completely wipe out, you know, that that's one, but I would say. You know, just a general caution, you know, I I believe, once again, you know, looking at budgeting from a long-term perspective, right? Water inventory, well, we're, we're gonna need to buy it at one point or another, right? And it's, if it's there, it's there, um. You know, we're gonna have to replenish it next year, you know, so I I, I don't think that looking at budgeting. Uh, from a short-sighted way that we know we have to fund these anyways, right? I I use the the bins as a good example of, um. You know, asset management, the bins are not going away, right? So next year, there's just gonna be more, and I I think that we, there's, there's been a history of kicking things down the road. And they pile up a little bit, and it is going to make future budgets more and more difficult, right? So I don't think that this is going to be, this is going to change anytime soon, um. You know, we've made large cuts, you know, twenty twenty one, I believe we cut. Uh, one point two million with the understanding of these will all be filtering back, right? And a lot of these items that we're talking about today are stemming from that, right? So it doesn't save the money, but it kicks it down the road, but that snowball gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and it does have to be addressed. At some point in time, those bins need to be replaced. Um, at some point in time, we will need to buy those parts for the water sewer inventory, so. You know, again, it's just my general caution, what I always believed for good budget principles, of doing it in a very systematic way. It will cost a little bit upfront, um, but having a good functioning organization that's adverse to. Adverse to those risk factors will pay dividends in the long run, right? But it, but it's a, it's a shift in mentality that I'm encouraging.
May speak to that. I, and I want to thank you for your comments, I think. If I can, I I'm gonna speak in support of Counselor Taylor, uh, what I believe is his, sort of his. Uh, his end goal here is to really look at continuing to seek reductions where possible. Um, I just, I don't think I can support this direction as it stands. Simply because I'm afraid, I don't know the impacts of what this particular uh consensus item would do at this point in time. Um, that being said, I I'm not finished with, you know, the good work, as it were. I've really tried to work on this budget to keep paring it down. Um, fully in support, I think, of the the direction behind it, but I just, unfortunately, I think this particular direction is a little bit too broad scoped. To be able to give me the information I would need in order to support, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGee, and I just have myself, um. The the mention was that. I'm not saying that we can't get it down to lowered in seven point six, and there's probably some good ideas in the discussion in council, so not prepared to make. Right now, because it's not part of that, it's, we, this is our only second look at it, so there may be things. All I'm saying is, I agree, I think this is too much that way. If we look at each individual one, and if there's something we wanna cut. Then maybe that's something, if it's fifty percent and understand that, but lump, lumping them all together. But I'm reminded of uh my last term and and one of the predecessors in the CEO chair that I respected a great deal. Made a comment in our, my first year of that term that we weren't cutting any more of the fat, we were cut into the bone. And I think this is an opportunity to start getting the knife out of the bone and starting to, you know, build efficiencies in our organization. Which I see a lot of the technology that was brought to us to this table is building efficiencies. Asset management, building efficiencies, the fact that, you know, my understanding with even asset management is this. This is really our last year from my, if I recall, and I'm looking at Mr. McLaughlin. Of a larger chunk of the budget. After this year, I'm sure there'll be little increases that maybe program-wise change or whatever. But we, we're at the, we're at the finish line is what I'm I'm understanding, and I don't wanna delay that any further. So I see that, you know, again, we're, we're, we're building those efficiencies to build better services to our community. And to also potentially, uh, you know, um, save on on our budget as well, so. Uh, that's all I can say on this matter, and committee, any other further comments on the consensus? Counselors.
Thank you, Deputy. I I would love to support this, but I can't. I'm just looking at that fifteen percent of our, um. Asset management, which is almost nineteen thousand dollars that we would knock off of. And asset management is just far too important. So, thank you, sir.
So with that, we see no other, we're gonna call this then question, this consensus, the question. That minor reductions to operational business cases, and we see consensus for reduction to operational cases of fifteen percent. From the asset management, water and sewer inventory, attraction, retention, uh specifically the welcome gift baskets and long-term service awards. And we will be voting electronically, and please vote now. And that is defeated with uh one in favor, Counselor Taylor, against the against. Thank you, uh, Counselor Race.
Thank you, Deputy. C A O, um, Deputy Mayor made reference to a seven point six tax increase, which would be roughly thirteen dollars a month.
Rue the chair, I believe that the seven point six percent would equate to a hundred and sixty two dollars per year. divided by twelve, uh, yeah, roughly.
And it's not based on a house worth three hundred and thirty thousand?
All right. Three hundred and seventy five.
Three seventy five.
There you go. Fine, at this point, I'd be, I'm sorry, to to all of me, have that calculation of if. The seven point six stood, this would be the impact for the non-residential and the uh presidential. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Race. Did I see someone else's hand up? Was it you?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and really it's a check-in question with no preconceived notions. Uh, but it's, it's seven thirty experience with budget. Is that I, unless it's the goal of council and admin to do the old marathon session late in the night to try and hammer it out. I I didn't come today thinking we were gonna wrap everything up, so just we have half an hour before we have to extend potentially. So I just, I'm wondering what council's feeling, unless I missed discussion before I showed up.
No, we, we did not discuss that, and I appreciate you bringing me up with, um. C A O, if I may quickly speak to that, um, I mean, we are potentially December fifth is also, and we have a special meeting on December seventh. So there is, if there's appetite to to not continue this evening past eight, which, you know, that's the council's decision. Or committee's decision, but we could reconvene the the continued conversation on the fifth. And and then have more, uh, again, on the seventh, is that my understanding?
Through the chair, that's correct, okay.
So Counselor Taylor and then Counselor McGee.
Well, I agree with that, but at at council's pleasure, I would like to do a check-in uh with council, just to see where they stand with seven point six. This has been mentioned a couple of times. You know, I wanna know if you're, you're okay with the seven point six or not okay. I I just, I would like to know that, uh, before we leave tonight, that's the only thing I would like to do for both of you. Does that changes how I would uh do things?
So if I ask, oh, Counselor McGee is to his question or?
No, to be fair, I was in queue for for something else, so I'll, you know, I'll simply remain there.
So I can speak to that. No, I'm not. I don't like the seven point six. I do want seven point six. I wanna go through the rest of the process to see if things can change. All I'm saying is, is that we have to be realistic, that this, this is a budget that's brought to us that I feel is, is a solid. Understanding and 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 they're sure, there's serious conversation to do, but that's my perspective. It's part of the process. I'm not prepared to end it at this time, you know, so that's, that's my thoughts on that question. Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else to Counselor Taylor's question?
Okay.
So Counselor, or Counselor McGee?
Oh, sorry, I will respond to that.
Okay.
And if I could keep my place, yeah, no, I'm, I I think we still have more work to do, uh, again, that's why I'm, you know. But again, I think just with some more targeted specificity on the programs or spending, that's all. Because I need to know what the impact of our cuts are potentially to the organization of the community. Uh, I just, I'm all really fearful of doing a blanket cut on something without administration being able to give us the uh. Recommendation of, well, here's the potential impacts to the program as I see it.
Okay, and Counselor Race and then Counselor Chambers.
Thank you, Deputy. So my question is in regards to the Hardest He Lived Station.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Race, I, this was a question, I I have another queue for Counselor Taylor, or Counselor McGee. This was just, if it was a response to Counselor Taylor?
Yeah.
Counselor Chambers.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Counselor, so in response to your question, no, like, as I said earlier, I don't love seven point six percent increase. But I went through and went through and went through this list of items and things, and to me, it's not unreasonable. And, you know, the list looks good. It looks like they did their work. They responded to the work that you guys did in October. So if we go through all the motions and it comes out at a seven point two, seven point four, seven point six, but our community needs this and our operations teams need that. Then I think it's my job to support it. So do we, do we go through the motions to continue? Yes, um, but I I think the key, we have to be. Obviously, still stewards of the taxpayer's dollar, I get that, but we've got a business to run. And and this, this is a very well put together, very clean, very precise budget, that's seems very reasonable in my eyes, so. That's, that's what I'm on.
Okay, so we'll leave that at that, and we do have thirty minutes left in this meeting, so I I suggest we continue and then see where we're at at eight o'clock. So I have Counselor McGee and then Counselor Race.
So following up on, thank you, Mr. Chair, and so following up on that last question about uh being half an hour to eight. So following up on, thank you, Mr. Chair, and so following up on that last question about uh being half an hour to eight, um. Without obviously discussing anything that can be discussed in open session, looking at item seven, our closed session one and two. Are we anticipating that to be a lengthy period of discussion? Just so I can sort of guess how much time we might be dealing with here.
Through the chair, I would say uh. Fifteen to twenty minutes, metal.
Thank you. Okay. Councillor Race.
I'll step back.
Councillor Taylor. I move that we go into closed session to discuss the closed session.
Hey.
That'll give us enough time to discuss closed session, I haven't concluded. But we're still fresh, so we can give fresh eyes to the closed session, and we can come back to it to revise this, we can come back with. Fresh eyes, well rested.
Okay, council, we have a motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, thanks, sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I'm gonna support it, I think, just our past experience, the later budgetary discussions seem to get, I think it's a. Decreasing output for everybody around the table. We have more time allotted, we're not gonna fix this tonight. Um you know, I I just think it's better to, we've had a good shot tonight and come back to it later. Uh and then we also don't have to extend and incur more costs.
Thank you. Hey, council, you have a motion to go into closed session, any other comments on the on the motion? Seeing none, then we will vote electronically, please, let's see. We need to move into closed session at seven thirty-five, so yeah, please vote now. And uh that is carried in answer. Thank you, everybody.